Ms. Baker and staff.
Mr. Van Arnhem has been heading up this issue, so he's going to address it along with our partners.
Looks like we have a lot of partners. I'm not quite sure if we have enough chairs.
Well, it's going to take them a minute to get schedule set up in the PowerPoint.
Do we need additional chairs?
No, I think we're set.
Mr. Radcliffe, come join us from our cities. You are part of this. Thank you. We need one more chair for Mr. Radcliffe. Judge Shepard, nice to see you. I don't know if you want to sit next to the Chief Judge, Richard. They're bringing another chair down. Thank you all for joining us today, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Van Arnhem.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I sit before you this afternoon with a distinguished group of officials and community partners, task force members, and interested citizens concerned about what we recognize to be an opioid epidemic in Palm Beach County in our great state of Florida. We are here to present our recommendations for Palm Beach County's response to the opioid crisis. Our report is comprehensive and aggressive and designed as a community response to address a situation that is causing an unprecedented and shocking amount of drug overdoses and deaths and severe financial and social impacts to our community. With county leadership and support from the healthcare district, the Palm Beach County Health Department, the Department of Children and Families, the Southeast Florida Behavioral Health Network, the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office, local and federal law enforcement agencies, Palm Beach County Fire Rescue, and other first responders, our state attorney, our public defender, the judiciary, municipal governments, hospitals, friends from our provider network, and countless others working on this problem, we can save lives by adopting these recommendations and diligently working on their implementation. We do recognize that this will need to be a sustained effort requiring a significant infusion of funding. We need committed partners to be successful, and we must ensure that our program is robust and flexible so that we can also address the ongoing impacts of crack cocaine use and other illicit drug use and new drug trends that are sure to follow. Before we start our presentation, I'd want to introduce you to our presenters and several other officials that are here to support these recommendations and to answer your questions. To my far left, we have Denise Kaufman from the County Attorney's Office, our experts that we brought in to help us as staff create the recommendations from the Ronyk-Rodlauer Group, Julie Rodlauer and Marcy Ronyk, Christina Henson from our executive director of our Criminal Justice Commission, your medical examiner, Dr. Michael Bell, Captain Houston Park, Palm Beach County Fire Rescue, and also Chair of the Heroin Task Force, Chief Deputy Michael Goger, Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office, and State Attorney Al Johnson from the State Attorney's Office, Al Johnson, and also the head of the Sober Home Task Force. Appreciate your here. Right behind me, we have Darcy Davis, the CEO of the Healthcare District of Palm Beach County, and Dr. Lina Alonso, I believe, is right behind us, our Health Department Director, Judge Caroline Shepard from Drug Court, and Judge Jeffrey Kolback, our Chief Judge, and Richard Radcliffe. Also, just quickly, I want to recognize, I think Carrie Howlett, our public defender, may be here. She was scheduled. John McKenna from the Drug Enforcement Administration. Judge Marks may be in the audience. Ann Burner, our CEO of the Southeast Florida Behavioral Health Network, and Chief Frank Kitzrow from Jupiter, representing the Police Chiefs Association. Also want to thank and welcome the members of the Heroin-Opioid Task Force that may be here and the Sober Homes Task Force. And if you could just maybe stand up, any of you that are from the task force or have been working on this with the task forces, if you could stand up, thank you very much. So happy that all of these individuals took the time to participate in today's presentation. Going to our PowerPoint presentation, just in the way of history, the Board directed staff back in November to bring a report back on the opioid epidemic and including a review of the National League of Cities and the NACO, National Association of Counties' report, and come back with some thoughts about what we could be doing and what we should be doing here in Palm Beach County to help address this issue. Want to recognize Vice Mayor McKinley for her leadership and pushing us at that time and since then, you know, on this project, and the leadership she's shown in the community on this. It's making a difference. In December, county administration and staff met individually with our behavioral health leaders in the community. We then contracted with some group of experts from out of Fort Lauderdale, but doing a lot of work here on our behavioral health needs assessment in the community, working also with Palm Healthcare on projects, very familiar with the subject matter and very familiar with the community to help us craft these recommendations. You'll see the process they went through. You'll hear from them. They'll present a -- they'll describe the current initiatives that were ongoing. They'll present you with some data. They'll talk about meetings with stakeholders, and they went through strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities analysis, a root cause analysis, and they developed our recommendations for staff. Our presentation today will talk about some data. We'll talk about impacts and initiatives that are currently underway. We will have recommendations both short and long term. And with that, I'd like to go ahead and recognize Marcy, who will conduct the first presentation, part of the presentation.
Thank you, and thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon to you, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. We're grateful to Palm Beach County for recognizing this challenge and for having the initiative to step forward and actually do something about it. We have worked with, as John said, a diverse group of stakeholders over a very short period of time and condensed and synthesized a great deal of information into the report that you have. We are going to begin our presentation with a high-level overview of the data and then move into some of the more specific data and then into the recommendations. And as you can see, Palm Beach County has experienced an exponential increase in the rate of fatal accidental overdoses over the last five years. And a recent national report was issued that showed that drug overdoses have actually killed more people than car accidents and gun violence combined, and that drug overdoses in 2015 have actually exceeded the number of AIDS deaths in 1995.
When you talk about overdoses, do these include toxic fentanyl, carfentanil, those types of things, or is it straight heroin overdoses?
Yes.
So is that a separate classification medically? I mean, that seems like you're poisoning yourself and you're not really, you know, taking heroin.
We're going to defer to Dr. Bell when he speaks to that. He'll speak to that on his slide of the presentation, but yes.
On the next slide.
Are you finished?
So just to your point, is that the issue is not that there's an incredible increase in heroin, but that the heroin is being mixed with synthetic opioids. And so that includes fentanyl and carfentanil and other analogs. And so people are not necessarily aware of this when they get their dose of heroin. But what it does do is it spikes the potency of the heroin that they receive, which then leads to the increased number of overdoses that were happening. And so people are not aware that they're getting a batch that has something mixed in with it, and this is common, and the next slide will show you just so you can see the spike, the amount.
One more brief question. Is that fentanyl cut with the heroin locally or does it come into the county pre-mixed?
That's a good question. I don't know if we actually know the -- yeah, I don't know if we actually know the answer to that. Something that I was actually just reading today said it's cut on the streets and put together on the streets, so that would lend me to believe that it's local, but we don't know the answer.
Law enforcement might be able to answer that.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
So you can see that over time, the drugs that have caused deaths in Palm Beach County have actually changed over time. So starting in 2007, it was cocaine that was causing more of the deaths. Over time, it turned to oxycodone and with the pill mills, and then more recently heroin. And then in 2016 was when the Medical Examiner's Office began tracking the fentanyl analogs, the carfentanil.
Okay, so on this slide, what you notice is that when you look at, for the state of Florida in 2015, the number of opioid deaths, we're number one. Which is not a good thing. Not yay, we're number one.
We shouldn't be smiling.
No, we should not be smiling that we're number one. So we're number one with 305 deaths. We don't have the data for 2016 yet because we're so new into 2017, it takes the medical examiners up in Tallahassee that long to give us a current trend, you know, current math. But this is the most recent data that we have access to. And we're closely followed by Broward County, and then Orange, and then Dade County. So it is a regional issue in that we need to be paying attention to our partners, our regional partners, to make sure when we talk about solutions and how we can solve that problem. And then when you kind of do the math, it comes down to that somebody's overdosing every two and a half hours in one day, and there's about 10 overdoses per day, which is a lot.
So it takes a diverse group of stakeholders to solve a very complex challenge, and this is a complex challenge, and it's ever-moving, and that's why we need to keep our eye on the ball and recognize where we're going. Through our reporting, we've met with this diverse group of stakeholders, and I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Bell, who will talk about, from the Medical Examiner's side, of where he sees things.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Let me just maybe answer the question that was asked previously. We're concentrating on opioid overdoses, and in my field, the fatalities. Opioid means it's based upon the type of receptor that activates the brain. Morphine is the, you know, kind of the well-known representative. But there's different others. There's heroin, and now fentanyl. And then there's slight changes in the fentanyl molecule that produce things like carfentanil, fluoridofentanil, acetofentanil. It becomes a real challenge to be able to, first of all, keep up with all the different changes that could be made to that molecule of fentanyl. It's much more dangerous. It's much more fatal in smaller concentrations than heroin or morphine. And probably the biggest problem is that nobody takes just one drug anymore. The overdoses that we see are combinations of drugs. And even if you were to go onto the street and buy one of these capsules, I want to buy some capsule of heroin. They've drug tested them, and oftentimes, it's not just heroin. It's heroin plus fentanyl, heroin plus fentanyl, plus carfentanil. And let's throw in a little bit of cocaine, and maybe alprazolam or Xanax. So it becomes a real challenge in determining, you know, what drugs are the main problems and where are they coming from. So going back to my graph, you can see, starting in 2012, up to 2016, my workload. In 2012, 1,281 cases. Last year surpassed 2,000. I would have never predicted in my lifetime that that would ever occur in Palm Beach. I'm close to retiring, that's why I'm saying that. Because when I started in 1993, the total cases were about 1,100 a year. And so over the last two decades, we've had a slow incremental workload increase, as you might expect because of increasing population, more people coming to Palm Beach. What's happened the last two years is phenomenal. It's an increase, 60% increase, in the last two years, which is almost exclusively due to these opioid overdoses. It's not like we're getting more homicides, we're not getting more, you know, heart attacks, more elder falls and head trauma. This is all due to opioid fatalities. And just looking at the numbers right now, I'm on the same par as last year, having more than 2,000 cases again. And you can see, last year, we had 592 opioid overdoses. You know, I'm not including the cocaines and the other prescription drug overdoses that don't involve opioids. So that's just a phenomenal number. You know, back in 1993, 42 overdoses. 2016, 592. Again, I don't see any stop at this point, so that's my three minutes. Thanks.
Okay, Captain Houston Park is going to speak about how it's impacting his agency.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to all of you. And first, what I would like to recognize is the people that are sitting here at this table, the table behind me in the audience. It is obvious an indication of the support and the need and the cooperative effort of everybody working together to conquer this issue. This is a big challenge for us, and as a first responder working for Fire Rescue as a paramedic, when you start looking at overdoses and you start looking at the causes, and we've identified this as an opiate-type of cause, heroin, fentanyl, carfentanil, we have an antidote, and that antidote is called Narcan, also referred to as naloxone. And it is the reversal that allows us to provide medication to a patient that takes them back or brings them back to life from respiratory arrest and in some cases cardiac and respiratory arrest. So clinically, they're dead, and we're bringing them back. If we get to them earlier and we were able to treat them, this reverses the effects of those opioids. Without that medication and without advanced procedures, these patients wouldn't survive. And what you can see is how the numbers have gone up and the challenges that we have. In 2015, we had 420 administered Narcan doses. And I might add to that as well, that with the increased strength and the toxic components of the newer drugs that are out there or the mixture of heroin with fentanyl and carfentanil, our normal doses of Narcan or naloxone don't work. So we've had to increase our dose rate. Our dose typically is .5 milligrams. And we're now up to as high as 10 milligrams to reverse the effects of some of these drugs. That's unheard of. We're the first in the country to step up to that level under the direction of Dr. Shepke, who had recognized that we were combating a drug that was much stronger than anything we've seen before. But if we get past 10 milligrams of Narcan, then we can't give more medicine. We have to take more advanced procedures. And so that becomes a bigger challenge for us, and we're able to do it, but it's much more harmful for the patient. If you look at 2016, we went from 420 to 2,598. If you want to look at the cost for 2012, we expended $18,003 for Narcan purchase, $205,346 for the year 2016. And then if you want to compare that to the overdose calls, in 2016, we generated 3,530 estimated opiate-related overdose calls. 2017 through March 15th, 401. So the statistics are not good in our favor. It shows that we're running more and more calls, we're expending more and more medication, and it's becoming more and more of a challenge. And so a couple of other things just to be aware of. When you look at the difference from 2012 to 2016, we had a 1,041% increase in cost of Narcan. And the pharmaceutical industry hasn't significantly raised the cost of Narcan. We've just had to purchase a lot more. And as I just explained, when we went from a half of a milligram all the way up to 10 milligrams, that's a significant amount of medication that we're utilizing. And so I present that to you as data and statistics of a medication that we're using on a daily basis that's saving lives and how important that medication is. If you go into cardiac arrest and we need to give you adrenaline, we have certain medications that will allow us to do that. It's the same thing. If you go into respiratory arrest because of an opioid or heroin-type drug overdose, we have to give you this medication and in some cases, all of the other ones that will get your heart started. So it becomes a real challenge. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Introduce Christina Henson from the Criminal Justice Commission to talk about the impact on the criminal justice system.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm going to speak just very briefly about the impact to the criminal justice system. What we did is we looked at the number of court cases for the last two years, calendar years 2015 and 2016, and we found that there were close to 80,000 criminal cases filed. Of those, what we look at when we classify criminal cases, because most of them come into the system with multiple charges. So what we look at when we classify these cases is what is the most serious charge? So when we look at the opioid charges as the most serious charge, we had a very small number of that 80,000, only a little over 2,400, which is only 3%. So what that tells us is a couple of things. When we look at those 2,400, what we find is that the vast majority of those 2,400 are for sale, trafficking, those types of things. It's a very small number for possession. So what we're finding is that law enforcement is targeting those people who are selling the drugs versus those people who are using the drugs. So that's one thing to know. The second thing is they're coming into the system in what I characterize as being masked. So we may have charges that are opioid-related as the secondary or underlying charge to a more serious charge, such as a violent charge or a theft charge or something like that. So the system actors are very sensitive to the issue of drug addiction, and they do their best to try and craft sentences that speak to those. The problem that we have in the system is sometimes we don't know. Because if they're not underlying charges or the most serious charge, we're getting cases that are coming into the system where they're not even listed as a charge, and the reason for the instance of the charge, the violence or the theft, may actually be an underlying addiction. So as we go through the court process, we try to identify those and get those people into treatment as part of the sentence, if that's something that the judge and the folks are amenable to. So the good news is that we're not arresting people who are using. We're getting them into treatment. We're trying to divert them into what is more proper for them. The Good Samaritan law that was passed a few years ago is one of the reasons for that. And we're working more on the law enforcement aspect with going after the supply side of the drug issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Chief Deputy Goger from Palm Beach Sheriff's Office to speak about the impact to law enforcement.
Well, thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us and staff for allowing us to present to you today this public health crisis. The Sheriff's Office, as well as others in the criminal justice system, our friends at Fire Rescue, our friends at the hospital emergency rooms, have experienced a burgeoning crisis with the abuse of opiates. It was after a decline in the crack cocaine era, a change in the cycle of abuse moved to synthetic opiate pharmaceuticals a little over a decade ago. In a concerted effort from several arenas, the proliferation of pill mills was reined in. However, like in other parts of the country, those who were addicted, along with others with substance abuse problems, very quickly embraced heroin as a replacement. They found it cheaper, and they actually found it more powerful than the pharmaceuticals. Unlike the decade of the 1970s, when heroin was one of the few drugs sold on the street, I know, I worked narcotics back in 1972, '73, we had very few overdoses. Today, the heroin is now laced, as you know, with the synthetic drugs that boost the disastrous effect on the central nervous system. In the '70s, again, we had few overdoses, but that was much less potent heroin. Now the combination basically shuts down the body's ability to function. Between the response of Fire Rescue and law enforcement, the impact on services has been overwhelming. You can see by the charts displayed. It displaces law enforcement's ability to actively patrol and respond to other community problems. Consider that in May 2016, the Sheriff's Office received over 1,700 calls for service-related overdose. Of those, 1,300 were 9/11 responses. Imagine the time spent by the communication officers who stay on the telephone with the caller until an officer responds. Imagine the stress on the communication officer who must deal with distraught family members or friends who have found the person in severe medical emergency and often with a loss of life. In the event of death, the patrol officer must first examine the body for trauma and then wait for a responding detective, crime scene, and then the Medical Examiner's Office for removal of the body. This entire process can take up to four to six hours. The detectives assigned must spend time gathering evidence, conducting interviews, obtaining search warrants, and pursuing those who were responsible for the delivery of the drugs. Patrol officers and detectives must worry about exposure to even small amounts of fentanyl or carfentanil. It's happened around the United States, not only for police officers, but for their police dogs. The Sheriff's Crime Lab has been inundated with laboratory evidence that must be processed to determine the validity of any of the substances recovered. They fall behind in their other duties with the influx of new heroin cases. In the event of an arrest, the individual's transported to the sheriff's inmate booking where he or she is processed, searched, and then interviewed as to the level of their addiction and their medical problems. Compare 2011 with 34 heroin arrests to now 987 heroin arrests, and you can see the impact on corrections. Many of those inmates are extremely ill, with many requiring extensive medical treatment, both in-house and in our medical ward, and then some requiring hospitalization. Hospitalization requires officers accompany them to the hospital, and if they're retained at the hospital, we have to provide 24-hour security. In some cases, drugs are smuggled into our facility in ingenious ways, and we've had a couple of overdoses in the facility. All this requires additional manpower. We provided additional training in drug identification, symptoms of overdose, and how drugs are discovered by the officers during search. Sometimes the courts direct inmates to treatment facilities, and that requires us to transport them to the different facilities. Let me say that we have currently a substantial waiting list for our drug education program called Another Way. Presently, in our male section, we have 62 males and 24 females. There are 88 males waiting on the list to be accepted into that program. We don't have room. It's a crisis, and I appreciate you considering taking a firm step forward to help us solve this problem. Thank you.
Commissioner Kerners and then Commissioner Valaschek, for questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll pose this question to our first responders, Captain Chief. I don't want to distract from the real issue why we're here, but what is the toll emotionally, psychologically on the first responders, and how do we better prepare for that going forward?
Thank you. I'd like to answer that. The emotional toll sometimes can't be measured. In the first responder community, we learn to build defenses to allow us to do our job and get through somebody's worst day. But what we're seeing with this overdose crisis is our first responders are seeing young individuals die more frequently than most of us will have seen.
young individuals die more frequently than most of us will have seen in our career, and they're seen in a short period of time. So that becomes a real stressor. I like to look at a twenty-two or twenty-four-year-old and recognize that as a child. As a parent of children of that age, they're children, okay? And so, when our responders are going to, quote, "children" or "young people," that has a much greater impact on them than when we spread out the diversity of the type of calls we run on. So there is a big challenge there.
I would also say that one of the big things that we have to deal with is the aftermath from the significant others of those who die. And I can tell you, family after family call in, make contact with us, they're distraught, they're frustrated, they're angry, because there's little we can do to prosecute. It's very difficult to prosecute an overdose case, and for the delivery of the drugs in itself. We've had some success, but it's very difficult. So you have to deal with the aftermath. Not only are they angry at the police, they're angry at everybody in the system, because they don't know what to do, they don't know how to deal with it. Plus, plus, what happens, and I think that you all have read about one of the assistants that worked here, the frustration of trying to get into treatment, and the waiting list for treatment is horrendous. There's little available out there.
Thank you. Commissioner Valaschek, then Vice Mayor McKinley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question, two related questions. One is, among the addicted population, how high is the awareness level that anytime they take a dose of this, they're potentially killing themselves? And I guess the second part of that question is, what is the incentive for the dealers to provide a product that's going to kill off their client base eventually? You know, it would seem like, on both sides, both the demand side from the addicts would be, hey, you know, I'd like to get high, but I don't want to take the chance of dying. And for the dealer, it's, well, why should I provide a product that, you know, is potentially dangerous and, you know, robs me of my income stream eventually?
Well, ironically, my experience in dealing with folks have told us that if someone overdoses, the other addicts want to know who's selling that drug, because it's got to be a good drug. That's the insanity of the addiction, where heroin is the cause. So, you know, nobody thinks they're going to die. Nobody thinks they're going to die.
Okay. Vice Mayor McKinley?
Commissioner Valaschek, they call that phenomenon chasing the dragon, and the closer you get to the dragon, the better they consider the product, and that's the incentive, unfortunately. Deputy Gogger, Chief Gogger, I have two questions for you, but first, I want to thank you. I mean, you've won awards for your advocacy in this arena, and you've been just a tremendous representative of the Sheriff's Department, and, I mean, at some point, I'll thank everybody, but you have really, you have been a best friend to my former aide, Johnny, and I know how much she appreciates you, and I want to thank you for being there for her and for her family. Two questions. We're going to, later on, much later on in this agenda today, we're going to be discussing the infrastructure surtax program. And one of the priorities on our infrastructure surtax project list, of course, are renovations to our public safety facilities, first and foremost, being the jail. Now, you said that there is a waitlist of eighty-eight men at the jail because you don't have the room for them. Under these renovations that we're going to be doing, is there an opportunity to redesign that particular unit to be able to accommodate more beds so you can shorten your waitlist?
I think with the funding for additional correctional officers, we would be able to do that, but it would require that funding. To advance the program, Another Way, once we had the drug farm, we've lost that due to a budgeting crisis, that was a licensed state program. Another Way is an educational program. It's been very successful. Once they graduate from that, we even try to get them into treatment programs after they successfully complete it, if their charges allow. So if there's facilities available, and we can redesign and consider it, and they are funded, I think that it would be, you know, most supported by the sheriff, I know. Our teams would love to see that.
But that's only if, I mean, do you have to commit a crime and go to the court system in order to get treatment? That's one probably piece to the puzzle that we're going to look at, but how do we go out here and provide the treatment for people before they get into the...
The drug court. Expartee orders, forcing them in the drug court, the judges that can order in evaluation, evaluation will tell whether they need treatment or not. So I believe that once we get that system in place, I know Houston and I have talked about it a lot, using the Marchman Act and court orders to get them into treatment. Not that it always works, but you know, we're doing something. The Suboxone program that Houston is overseeing has been a success. We're moving forward with that. We're considering moving that into our jail, and inmates on their release will be given, will be interviewed, see if they volunteer for the program, and we'll enter them into the Suboxone program. We'll give them a dose in the jail the day before they leave, and then follow it up with counseling and continue with Suboxone.
And Madam Mayor, I have two questions, but I do have a whole sheet of comments for when we get to that point...
Question. Go ahead.
...to address the issue that you just raised. I agree with you. My second question is a little more pointed and probably going to put you on the spot, and I don't like putting people on the spot, but on this particular issue, I'm going to... There has been a reluctance from your department to have your law enforcement officers carry Narcan and be able to administer it. There are some other law enforcement agencies, I think the City of West Palm Beach and the City of Delray Beach and their police departments are carrying Narcan, and there are several law enforcement departments across the country that are doing it. Can you explain to me the reluctance from the sheriff for your deputies to participate in that fashion?
We've researched this with our communications division and the calls for service that we've examined. We have never had an incident where we were the first ones at the scene on that overdose. It's always fire rescue. We're very fortunate to have a very active fire rescue unit, and they are generally the first ones at the scene, and they're the ones that can administer Narcan. We are considering some Narcan for our individual officers, because around the country, officers have been exposed to fentanyl and carfentanil during search warrants and have gotten very ill. So we're considering carrying fentanyl just for those situations for our officers, but as long as we have such a successful and professional fire rescue team, we don't believe it's necessary to outbid each one of our officers.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Reserve the right to ask questions later.
Okay. Any other questions from the colleagues? Then we'll go to Mr. Van Arden.
Madam Mayor, you've been very patient in listening to the data and listening to the impacts. We have a few more slides that summarize our recommendations for you. This is the, you know, somewhat of the meat of the presentation. We won't take very long. We've got more detailed information in the report, but we would like to just give you a brief overview of the recommendations, and clearly, you know, expansion of treatment options is a big piece of what we're recommending to the board.
Well, I know, because we have such great newspaper reporting in Palm Beach County, that besides this room, which is filled with people that are very passionate about the matter, that we have a lot of people at home watching this. So with your recommendations, you know, utilize the time that you and the professionals here need to provide the information to us and the people at home.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, as you've heard, it's complicated. It's diverse, there's a lot of moving parts, and we haven't even touched the surface around treatment options. I also want to recognize that in addition to the members that John introduced, we also have a number of members from the Recovery Action Partnership that are here today, and many of whom are in recovery themselves, have lost individuals, loved ones, to this epidemic, and we really appreciate their time. We've met with them, and we really do appreciate them taking time. We took several reports and synthesized some of those recommendations, including the Sober Homes Task Force report, the Heroin Task Force report, so we had a foundation, and in particular, the National League of Cities and National Association of Counties report, which was very, very vital and helped us build on that foundation. So what we're going to do is just take you through quickly some of those high-level recommendations, and as you know, there are many, many more that are included in the report.
So with regards to leadership, recognizing the size and scope of the issue and how complex it is with multiple partners being involved, just as you can see from the table, there really needs to be kind of a mechanism for oversight, for county-wide initiative, so that this, we can continue to move forward with making, taking any of the recommendations and moving that plan and that process forward. We also need to make sure that, as mentioned earlier, that we have a regional attack on this, because if you look just to the south, you'll see that the numbers are creeping up, and so the drugs are being passed over county lines. So we need to make sure we work together with our partners in a regional basis. Regarding prevention and education, it's really important that the community understand more about this issue, so that they're very well aware of who to call when there's a crisis, what law enforcement's responsibility is, and what first responders can do to help them. And so, we need to do a little bit of community engagement regarding that. We need to make sure that we're trying to work with the schools and teach our children that are in schools about the impact of these kinds of drugs and how to stay away from them. So we need more prevention initiatives in the schools as well. We need to make sure that our healthcare personnel understand how to work with people who are coming into the emergency rooms, and how to address people who are experiencing these overdoses, as well as how to work with their families. And then, finally, we want family members to know who to call when they have, when they need to talk to somebody about what's going on.
So we also talked about treatment capacity, and you heard, we're under-resourced. In the state of Florida, we're forty-ninth in the country for mental health funding, and we're just about down there for also substance use funding. So we need to increase our capacity for treatment beds, for publicly-funded treatment beds, and also accessing those resources. We're fortunate that the pilot project is actually engaging peer support, people who have been there and done that, and understand what the draw is to using, and how to help people get the help they need when they decide that they want that help. So we're very fortunate to have that, and we're looking forward to expanding that. We're also, we need to work together as a community, so all departments working together for diversion, being able to refer somebody to get into treatment, and then following up with them once they're being discharged from wherever they are. So that coordination piece is very, very important.
So with regard to public policy and legislative advocacy, we need to get the insurance industry at the table. If you follow the money on this, they're paying for many things that are causing some of these challenges, and that's been exposed through some of the work with laboratory results and how, overbilling of laboratory results. But they need to be a partner in this process to help us solve this challenge. We also need to increase the use of the prescription drug monitoring program, which is really in its infancy, only a few years old, but we need to figure out how to use that program so it best benefits everybody, and so we can keep track of the prescription opioids that are being, the number of prescriptions that are being out there, and how many drugs are out there on the streets that have been legally prescribed. And also, support the Sober Homes Task Force recommendations, which we're fortunate enough to have Al Johnson from the State Attorney's Office here. Do you want to give an update on what's happening with the Sober Homes? Not to put you on the spot, but are there any, did you want to give any update about the legislative initiative?
Madam Mayor, is that okay?
Good afternoon, now, absolutely.
Okay. I'll scoot in here very briefly. The one thing I wanted to mention today, you know, after Dave Ehrenberg started the Sober Homes Task Force through an appropriation by the legislature last year, never did we realize that we would have so much to do and accomplish so much in so short a time. I want to talk about HB eight oh seven and SB seven eighty-eight, they're before the legislature now. I know many of you have been in Tallahassee and continue to go back. This is, I feel, the most significant piece of legislation in the area of substance use disorder and treatment since the early nineteen nineties. And just to give you an overview, it contains a complete overhaul of DCF's rulemaking authority, changing the approach from one of licensed by right to meaningful oversight and tools that are consistent to the tools that are available to the Agency for Healthcare Administration, AUCO. This is a breakthrough, it's significant. Of course, what I said to staff and what each and every one of you, when you talk to any of the legislators, it's meaningless unless there is funding. Funding should come through fees and fines, but clearly, DCF needs the appropriate ability to carry out these, this great new piece of legislation when they write their rules. It's got a marketing statute to prevent the unscrupulous bad actors from misrepresenting their products, their location. Many of you know that you could Google FADA, Florida Alcohol and Drug Abuse Association. Up comes an eight-five-oh number, you think, well, that looks like FADA, it's out of Tallahassee. And then when you call that number, it's a lead generator. Hold on, help is on the way. And then you get a person on the line trying to sell you to go to rehab in Michigan or in Delray Beach. It's crazy what's happening with marketing right now, it's so underregulated, and this section is so needed, and it's in there. Increasing fines and punishment for patient brokering. We see that patient brokering is probably the number-one manifestation of criminality in the business right now. It's almost become standard practice. If you think of seventy-five percent of the private-pay individuals that come into Palm Beach County from Michigan, Ohio, Indiana, New Hampshire, they're trying to get well, their parents are sending children to Palm Beach County, and they get here, and they get into a cycle of relapse, because the economic model favors relapse. If you have sobriety, you lose custody. So the unscrupulous, there are plenty of good actors that are getting run out of business by these bad actors that are marketing like it's human trafficking in a way. So the marketing statute, the increasing of fines and punishment, it gives the Attorney General's Office statewide jurisdiction over patient brokering, which is huge. If it happens between, say, Broward and Palm Beach County, we now have another prosecuting arm that can prosecute those cases across circuit lines. It enhances the voluntary certification program. You know, Sober Homes is the name of the Sober Homes Task Force, but it's not really what we do. But there are so many sober homes. Delray Beach estimates eight hundred in Delray Beach alone. There are probably, I would estimate, from what I've seen, four or five, maybe more thousand sober homes in Palm Beach County. Look for a van, look for a lot of cars, and likely as not, that's going to be a sober home. So it requires, and most of these are flophouses, so it requires this new legislation that not only are providers prohibited from referring to an uncertified sober home. Certification is very important, because it gives you standards in terms of the running of the house and oversight. But not only from the providers, but now upstream, which we find most of the patient brokering are sober homes that are little more than marketers, that are selling human beings into treatment in return for rent, in return for benefits, gym memberships, scooters, pedicures, manicures, gift cards, clothes, shoes. So this statute, the legislation is going to take care of both directions, going upstream, going downstream. Now, the Sober Homes Task Force will be turning its attention to additional legislation that's going to be proposed next year, I'm sure, if we can continue, which Dave wants us to continue. It's one of his most important projects, concentrations right now out of the office. And we need to turn our attention to the public side, which is a lot of what you are doing here, a lack of beds. I'll just give you an example, this Friday's meeting, and I'll end with this. At the Sober Homes Task Force, we're going to be talking about new issues. And one of the issues is, and Captain Park, you see this on a daily basis, you talked about JFK, the drop-offs... You talked about JFK, the drop-offs. We did a ride-along for one overdose, and I saw six or seven people in that emergency room that had no physical injury and were in the demographic. And I, probably overdoses, walk-ins, drop-offs. Anyway, these patients or these addicts, when they get the Narcan, it zaps all the heroin, fentanyl out of their system, and what do they want? They want to get high. They're in withdrawal, and the hospitals can't keep them there. The program is voluntary. The Heroin Task Force program, it's great, and I think you've got 12 people involved so far, and that's outstanding. But all those people that walk out and they relapse once, twice, three times, I think the record is four times one individual, four relapses in 24 hours. We need to look at the Marchman Act, and we need to look at the Baker Act, because Marchman is the one, but it takes a week. And by the time you have an emergency here, so if you Baker Act somebody, okay, say you say, well, they're a danger to themselves, and we can see it, the doctor can see a dual diagnosis here, where are they going? Are there beds? That's the point. There has to be an increase in the number of beds on the public side to be able to address this issue. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
What are those two bill numbers?
HB 807, SB 788. 807, just so you know, has been referred to the floor. I found out today. So it's through all the committees. We need to get SB 788 conformed. We've suggested a strike-all amendment so that we don't have an argument on the floor about the language. And many of you know, you've been in the legislature, you know that you don't want to have nonconformed language. So we're asking that SB 88 be strike-all and then adopting HB 807. And we have one committee, I'll be driving. Todd Von Lahren's driving. Commissioner McKinley, you'll be driving. Tallahassee, we have a hearing in the Senate Appropriations Committee tomorrow, sometime between 10:00 and 6:00. And then if they don't get to it, it'll be the following day between 8:00 and 10:00. We've been unanimous at every stop. We haven't had a single vote against this bill in committee. And we need to keep that pressure on, we need to keep that focused, and we need to get these bills passed.
Thank you. Commissioner Kerner, Commissioner Valache, and Commissioner Bernard and Commissioner McKinley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'll direct this question to Mr. Johnson, our legal expert here today. You know, I'll preface this by saying my wife works at the Atlanta Police Department, and every first four hours of her shift is in the ER at JFK, and I bring her dinner every night that she works, and every night there's somebody that's dropped off and the car flees. And I mean, it's unbelievable how often this occurs. And when we talk about political will here and putting resources to really combat this problem, my question to you is, are there models throughout the nation where there's a more robust role the government plays in filing Marchman Acts with the government, if we get past the legal standing side of it, where the government is one initiating it on a routine basis, to where we are taking them away? I know that there's a time, a process that occurs, but ultimately, they will be put into treatment for five days, and they're taken away from the substance.
I wish I could answer that question about the Marchman and Baker Acts around the country. Perhaps Dr. Bell may have some information or someone else on the panel. I can tell you one thing. Our Sober Homes Task Force, the things that you are doing and the things that the Florida Legislature are doing, are being looked at by the rest of the country because we're the model. We're the ones taking the bull by the horns here in Palm Beach County.
Does taking the bull by the horns, from your perspective, include the government playing a more active role in the Marchman, the filing of the Marchman Act process? Can I just, before you answer that, because I think as laypeople, we think of the typical, like the captain said, the 22-year-old young man or woman that was brought here for drug treatment does not have a family to go through the Marchman Process with, has no resources, is really just a widget in this grand horrible scheme.
I think the better view would be to look at the Baker Act, because the Baker Act is the emergency. The Marchman Act is more of a process, is a court process. So I think that, and again, I am not qualified to be an expert on this issue, but knowing that the Baker Act is for emergency purposes, and what stands in our way is the dual diagnosis aspect of it. There has to be a mental health aspect as well as a substance use aspect. That probably is where we're looking. Maybe to take the Marchman Act and carve out an emergency type of situation under the drug use and to have some kind of mandatory 72-hour detox. But that's, those are the sort of things that we'll be discussing at the Sober Homes Task Force meetings, because we have the doctors, we have the clinicians, we have the lawyers that deal with this. And I'm looking forward to having your answers in the near future.
Thank you.
I can briefly just respond to that for a second. The Marchman Act in and of itself requires a whole evaluation process, and that's included in the plan. It's one thing to be able to get through the Marchman Act itself, as you well know. It's another thing to get somebody into treatment when there's no treatment beds available, and then only keeping them there for a few days, and then having no support once they get discharged. So it's very complicated, and the Baker Act is primarily for people who are psychiatrically a danger to themselves or others, and so it really requires a broader evaluation, and that is a part of the plan. And so we're hoping that when the plan gets implemented, it will include that.
Will include the government being the initiator of that process?
A revamping of looking at how we can utilize the Marchman Act to help resolve issues as they present themselves, because right now, it doesn't work for people. And you need the data to support what's working and what's not working in order to make recommendations.
Commissioner Valache.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, for Mr. Johnson, what are the current criminal penalties for patient brokering?
The current penalty is...
And does the legislation expand those in any way?
Very briefly. Currently, it's a third-degree felony for no matter how many counts you have, no matter how many times you do it. It's a level three. There are 10 levels. Three is toward the bottom, the lowest level felony. It takes 13 counts, 13 individual charges of patient brokering before a defendant will actually score by the guidelines a minimum amount of prison time, 13 counts. I mean, that's not to say that fewer counts can land somebody in prison, but just on that basis alone. What the new legislation does is it increases one level for a patient brokering count to level four. Still takes probably about eight, seven or eight counts. But then, if we're serial brokers, for serial traffickers of patients, if they're 10 or more, it becomes a second-degree felony, level six. Two of those will land you in prison by the guideline score sheet. And if it's 20 or more, which we're finding, the folks that are engaging in this patient brokering are doing it, we've got several cases with 90-plus counts. That's a first-degree felony punishable by up to 30 years in prison, and it only takes one to have a presumptive prison sentence.
And I've seen the presentation that you and Dave did twice now, and I hope everybody here has seen it, because it was very illuminating. But it's clear that that entity that's in the middle of that cycle of treatment, sober houses, IOP, and then potentially sobriety, but the most heinous part of that, I thought, was that that entity in the middle, the broker, hooks the person who's achieved sobriety, starts him back through the cycle again. Is that a separate type of felony, or is, you know, and can they be prosecuted for that?
Knowing and willful misrepresentations that are material in nature, in other words, they're, you know, you misrepresent, like the FADA example, you misrepresent who you are, where you are, and what you do. That's material, and you do it willfully and knowingly, the new legislation creates a third-degree felony fraud, which it's never been, you know, there are general fraud statutes, but it's never been specific to this type of telecommunications or marketing fraud. So yes, there's also a section that punishes the marketers for violations.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard, Commissioner McKinley, and we still have the presentation to finish and public comment, and then commission discussion. Commissioner Bernard.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one observation is, in regards to the House Bill 807, it's by Representative Hager, who's from Palm Beach County, and Representative Harrell, and also Representative Bruzzo and Berman. And the Senate bill, which is by Senator Clemens, which is Senate Bill 788, I was looking at it, it's, the hearing is on the 6th. That's what it says for the Senate hearing.
Thursday.
Good thing I'm driving. No, there's an appropriations hearing tomorrow unless they moved it.
Yeah, they moved it. It says on there that it's going to be on Thursday.
On Thursday?
On the 6th. One question is, my, one question is to Dr. Bell. One of the slides regarding the fentanyl and the analogs, can you explain, like, all the different? I'm a little bit lost, so this is new to me.
Certainly. Can we go back to that slide? Okay. What each graph represents...
Not this one. It's the, yeah, that one.
Oh.
Yeah.
We've talked about heroin. We've talked about the fentanyl that often is laced in with the heroin. And the analogs you see here, really the carfentanil is the only one, the player that's really on the street. The rest of those, we don't see. We see some other types of analogs, which are not up there. But for the most part, carfentanil, because it is 10,000 times more potent than fentanyl, which is 100 times more potent than heroin. So, you know, it's measured in picograms per milliliter. That's minus 12 compared to milligrams per liter, which is the usual concentrations that we're measuring drugs in. So it's extremely difficult to detect, and at the same time, it's also extremely potent because just a small amount is required.
I want to follow up, Madam Mayor. Like, so where are they getting, where is this coming from?
It's manufactured in labs in China.
Probably China.
Right. And what's happening is, it's really just chemistry, and they're just changing the molecule of fentanyl. And when they change it, if it's not illegal, it's allowed to be, you know, exported into other countries. But once it's made illegal, then they can't, then they'll just change the chemical composition. And that's why this is such a difficult problem right now.
So it's made in China?
It could be made anywhere, but yeah, that's...
Yeah, the carfentanil that we are experiencing is made in China, and they did recently make it illegal. So we're not going to be seeing that in the future. However, as Dr. Bell's saying, then the next analog will be coming along. So you put your finger on that leak, and then there's another leak in the boat, and so, but that recently, within the last month, that was made illegal.
In China.
One of the other things, too, is that it's flown from China, and most of it's flown into Mexico now, because our customs have gotten much better at interdicting the shipments into the States. But it's flown into Mexico and then smuggled into the United States.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor McKinley.
Just some comments on the Marchman Act. I just want everybody to know that our lobby team includes a gentleman named Paul Lowell from Foley-Lardner, who is probably one of the best healthcare lobbyists in the state, and he has been working as part of our approved legislative agenda revisions to the Marchman Act for the last three years. There are several bills. So not only is our lobby team on this issue, the task force, the Florida Supreme Court Task Force on Mental Health and Substance Abuse in the Courts has also made Marchman Act and Baker Act provisions part of their legislative agenda and are currently working bills through the legislature as well. I wish I could say that it took a week to get in. It took Johnny, one time, 29 days to get Tasha in. The problem is, it's involuntary for them to appear before the court. It's voluntary for them to stay in treatment, and that's the glitch that we need to fix. So I just wanted to bring some of those issues to the board's attention. Thanks.
Any other questions? I have two. And this is for Dr. Bell or, I saw Dr. Alonso, okay? Or, thank you. Not any longer. Now we know where you are. Addiction has been a national concern for many years, and I've got to believe that places like the Mox Blanc Institute, who is working on neurological, and now we have these fantastic CAT scans that can look at imaging, and great innovative scientists and engineers, somebody has to be getting close to some type of chemical that will look at those receptors in the brain and target the one for addiction and be able to really target it specifically. Turn that piece off. Is anybody doing it? Please tell me that they are this close to clinical trials somewhere.
There's a lot of research going in that area, of course, but I'm not familiar with anything that we're very close to yet. I don't know if Ann Burnham would have any information from the Southeast Behavioral Network working on or doing that kind of work. Ann?
Good afternoon. Part of the plan will be to include medically assisted treatment, and I think what you may be referring to is a drug called Vivitrol, and it does block the craving, and it allows the individual then to participate in therapy. It's a long-acting injectable, so you only get it once a month, and you can stay on it for whatever term is appropriate. So you could be on it for eight to 10 or 12 months while you're working on the underlying issues associated with the addiction to begin with. Is that kind of what you were looking at, is something that actually blocks and works with your brain to remove that craving?
That craving.
Yes. So it is out there. It is part of this plan, and it's an injectable called Vivitrol.
So, okay. Vice Mayor McKinley says, how much is that? Do we know how much?
Yes. It is about $950 per month. It is, there is funding for it through the Department of Children and Families. We are also looking to increase that funding through the Cures Act, which is the federal dollars that have come down to Florida, and about $17.1 million will be distributed to the seven managing entities to provide prevention and treatment for opioid-specific addiction. In that, it includes Suboxone, which is also a medically assisted protocol for withdrawal and part of the pilot project that Captain Park has referenced, and then also having that option for individuals to then participate in a Vivitrol protocol where you're in treatment and you're getting the injectable, you're not craving the drug, and it can be done on both an inpatient and an outpatient basis, so that it's an integral part of the overall strategy, is to make sure that those individuals who want access to that medication, that it is provided. We can also purchase it through a lower cost through the healthcare district, through the federally qualified healthcare pharmaceuticals. So we're also looking at being able to leverage their funding and access to that as well. So we do have many approaches for medically assisted treatment.
You are the bright spot of the whole afternoon's conversation.
You are not the first to tell me that, so thank you.
Judge Shepard?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to have Captain Park address this, because he and Dr. Kenneth Shefty from JFK Emergency Room have been working on this for quite a while and have come up with what I believe in my five years of running Adult Drug Court is the first glimmer of hope that can perhaps end this problem. And that's the Suboxone Treatment Protocol that they came up with themselves and have people running through...
This is the JFK Pilot Program, and thank JFK for their part, stepping forward and being part of this effort. Captain Park, should you want to add?
Well, thank you for that. Really, what we're looking at is, when we developed the pilot program with JFK...
Really what we're looking at is, when we developed the pilot program with JFK, the goal was, the Suboxone, which is one medical assisted treatment modality that we can go after, we want to eventually have a menu. So not every patient's gonna fit into every category for every medication that's out there, but if we have a menu, and it best fits that patient's needs, then that will be the opportunity to treat their addiction. So, little difference between Suboxone and the injectable Vivitrol, what they're talking about. Suboxone is what we're using right now, and we're, we're seeing successes with it, and there are studies that have been done by Yale, that we're able, or we're trying to reproduce, and it seems to be that we're headed that way. The Suboxone, it stops the withdrawal effect of coming off the opiates. And that's primarily why addicts will reuse, because they don't want to experience that pain. And so, if we can give them the Suboxone, as we are doing, we kind of keep that person in check, and then with the behavioral health counseling that goes with it, there is success. The Vivitrol can't be given until the person is detoxed or cleaned, for, depending on their, their dependency, it could be eight days to two weeks. So it's really important that we work together with that, because you can't just give Vivitrol to someone that is, is toxic with these drugs, it won't work. They have to be clean first, or have gone through detox. So Vivitrol is one example. The Suboxone manufacturer has recently come out with an injectable as well. One of our doctors at the healthcare district, Dr. Schlosser, just got certified to do that. But those are, those are long-term goals that we're looking at, and immediate goals are utilizing the Suboxone and Vivitrol as potential treatments.
Thank you. Vice Mayor McKinley?
I had some questions, maybe Southeast Behavioral Health Network, if you, if you could answer for me, on the Vivitrol, does Medicaid cover that?
Yes.
It does, okay, for the entire treatment?
Obviously, it's medically necessary, and so it, it would go along with the, the therapy and the counseling, so as long as it is therapeutically indicated, it should be covered by Medicaid.
Okay, and if somebody doesn't have Medicaid, and they require that treatment, do the health district insurance programs cover Vivitrol?
That would be the next level for the safety net, and then there, the third level would be the federal funding through the Cures Act, also promotes medically assisted treatment. So we would have multiple funding streams to pay for both the, the injectable medication itself, plus the blood test that is required, and then the funding through Southeast Florida that we administer on behalf of the Department of Children and Families, would cover the therapy for however long that was, was appropriate. So it's kind of a multiple approach.
And the Cures Act funding, when is that due to come down?
So the legislature is in session, and so the department has requested spending authority. So as soon as that part is approved in this legislative session, so we're expecting a portion of that to be received in the state's fiscal year right now. So sometime between May 1st and June 30th, we should have at least an initial funding. And together with our provider network, we had submitted a plan, so that we had identified beds that would be ready to go as soon as that funding became available, and have a number of mechanisms in place, so that we can maximize the use of the funding the moment that it's available to us.
Okay, so that funding has already come down from Washington, and it's just...
It's in the, it's in the state, and that's a portion of it. So that's specific for opioid treatment and opioid prevention programs.
Okay, well, the, the whole funding was supposed to be 26 million, so what portion has come down, do you see?
17.1 million will come for direct treatment, and then 10 million of it will be administered by the state for statewide programs and initiatives, through a number of, of programs that they'll be sponsoring. So, some statewide prevention initiatives, some additional work on the prescription drug tracking, so they, they have a number of statewide initiatives that they'll be administering with the 10 million, and I can get you the specifics for that.
So only 17 million is coming, but that's not going to all 67 counties, that's only targeting five counties, correct?
It's, it is state funding, but it is based on need, so we are expecting to get more than just a proportionate allocation, because we've been able to demonstrate, obviously, such need. So we're expecting to get a, a significant piece of, of that, which represents both our capacity, so we needed to have the availability of the services, as well as the, the need compared to the rest of the state.
Okay, now is that just for the tri-county area, or is that for Palm Beach County?
It would, we represent both Circuit 15 and Circuit 19, so there'd be a portion between the two of those. The request that we put in was for a little over $8 million annually. The Cures Act only covers two federal fiscal years, so that was a, a piece that we wanted to make sure that we were able to use that funding quickly, and for the time allotted.
Yeah, Circuit 19 is to the...
Yeah, Martin, St. Lucie, Okeechobee, and Indian River County.
Okay, and the President's proposed budget includes cuts to NIH, which was supposed to be used for research under the Cures Act. Is that going to affect us at all, if that were to go through?
I, I'll need to look into that, but I'll be sure to get, to get back with you.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, too. Can we use the federal dollars for programs like implementing clean syringe programs?
That's, that's not part of, of it, so that would be, that would be more of a local initiative, or we would need to find a local fund source to be able to provide that.
Government, local, non-taxpayer, is that what you're saying?
Non-taxpayer dollars, yes.
Okay. I think it's a very important piece for long-term disease prevention.
As do we.
Thank you. To our consultants, because you spoke about that we need to do more in our schools. What are you suggesting that our schools do differently than what they're doing now? Are there specific programs that you think should be in our schools?
Well, we do have some, some after-school education going on in the school system. It's really more about learning what's going on within certain schools, and targeting initiatives based on what the need is. And so I can't answer that question fully until we know what the need truly is. However, one of the things I will say to you is, you know, kids grow up to be adults, they become young adults. And so what we're seeing is, the population that this is affecting are the 18 to 25-year-olds, primarily. And I will also, I just want to say something that we need to do in terms of education, it's not just the school system, it's not just the emergency personnel, it's also physicians who are prescribing medications that are affecting our children. So, for example, if a child goes to the dentist to have their wisdom tooth removed, and they're being prescribed pain meds for that, it's an automatic prescription that they're giving.
So is our Dental Society, or Palm Beach Medical Society, here with us today?
And that's why we need that coordinated, integrated approach, is because...
Did you work with them before putting this report together?
No, we did not meet with them, we met with the Department of Health, though, about that. So, it is, it is an important issue, and that's where it starts, and so we need to, as we said, you take your eye off the ball, there's something else, and so I will say, our recommendations that we made, the 25 recommendations that we made, we feel strongly, and we're confident, that if we put those recommendations into action, Palm Beach County will be seen as the model for the rest of the state, and for the rest of the country. You just need to make sure that we're constantly monitoring the plan, and that we're having our, all of our partners at the table, and identifying those unlikely partners who we may not have identified, to come together and to talk about what do we do together, including the school board, including the Palm Beach Medical Center.
Any other questions at this point? Okay, go back to your presentation, go ahead. I think you're on evaluation and monitor.
That was, I just, I just said that.
That, Madam Mayor, that was the, kind of the wrap-up. I mean, I just want to close with a couple things. One is that, and I think the lines of questioning of Vice Mayor McKinley and others relative to the availability of federal and state funding are very important, we need to be very aggressive in, in trying to bring down those dollars here locally, to, and then to the extent that we can match, match up, or contribute our, our local dollars, we need to do that. Those, those local dollars need to include, and I know you feel strongly about this, we need municipal, the municipalities coming to the table, and, and being a part of, of the solution. So, as Marcy said, this is a strong plan that we can begin implementing immediately. We ask that you approve the plan, and our resource requests that are provided in the agenda item, and let us get to work on a program that we, we believe will be a model, and that we believe will help save lives in our community. So that concludes, concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you very much. We will move now to public comment. Commissioner Berger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alex Larson to the microphone, Christine Schwartz after that.
Now, I'm gonna tell you a little story. I was with Mr. Abruzzo, and you and I stood right over there, and I said, what are they gonna do next when you take away the pills? Heroin. It's exactly what happened, Commissioners. This is what was given out to our children, a PDR that showed them the euphoric little stuff, and how the pills worked. It's called nope. It was the stupidest thing I ever saw. Given our kids Adderall, Ritalin, Concerta, they're giving them amphetamines, and they're eight years old. You know what? The first time I ever saw a drug was I was in high school. At least I was in high school. I mean, this is stuff, because like, it is, you asked a very good question, did you go to the doctors and ask them what they're doing? Because alls I hear is, my child can't focus. You know what made me focus? My grandmother's eyebrow. She would've knocked me right through next week if I didn't focus. You know? You know, we're lazy. I saw a kid with a pacifier the other day with a smartphone. A pacifier with a smartphone. This is where we are, Commissioners. There was a place called The Willow in Naples, they were fantastic drug rehabilitation for years, and I'm talking from the 80s on. When I met that one SOB cop that said, oh, I run a sober house, and I need to talk to you, and I said, you're sadly mistaken, and thank God you busted him. I mean, no, this is ridiculous. Insurance is for 30 days, we're making up excuses. Because I went to Abruzzo and Clemens and everybody, because my pill at the, at the little seminar was a big blue and white pill, and it began with F it all. Okay? And I held it up, and the Commissioners didn't like it very much, but that was the facts of life. Because we're not even studying what drugs are in the prisons. I'm being, you're violating my HIPAA rights, but not the prisoners'. We're, we're giving out drugs in the prisons, we're not checking out what we're giving. We had this discussion, I'm not kidding, years ago. It was over by Mont's Botanical Garden, way before this. But now we got a whole bunch more dead people than we had to begin with. Because the one question I asked, one of the people making the presentation, about their little child who was 34 years old, did you give them Ritalin or Adderall? Ritalin. So you need to start at the beginning, ladies and gentlemen. If you're giving kids amphetamines, they're gonna do something. I think every vodka bottle should be scanned. If John Q walks into a liquor store and has a bottle of vodka, it should be scanned. He bought a bottle of Scotch, and he should be watched. Because you're violating my, there's 17 million people in this state, give or take, that's what they say. And, you know, for this stuff, the doctors can't even give out the medications, Commissioners.
Thank you.
So, at least get the facts.
Rick Malt to the microphone, please, over here.
The problem is great. What are the causes of addiction? From what I've studied in my own personal life, there are three causes. Accidental addiction. You know, I know Justin, he was a student of mine and my son's friend, he was a roofer, he fell off a roof, doctor put him on oxycontin, and suddenly caught it, cut it off. So what did he do? He went to heroin, and they found his bloated body in a canal. And I'm not saying cut it off, this stuff has a purpose medically, but any doctor that prescribes it should be required to monitor the patient down the line, how is it working, and not just stop it cold. You know, the, the toothache, maybe they do need the pain pills, because every person's pain level is different, I know this for a fact. They need to monitor. And little Johnny with Ritalin, I was a retired teacher, and I can count on one hand, in 28 years, and I saw over 600 kids a week, that truly needed the medication. And somebody, years ago, you could give the kid caffeine, and if she didn't have the Ritalin, and it would have the same effect, which is less dangerous. So the accidental. West Virginia, they had on 60 Minutes, this tiny little town, tens of thousands of pills of oxycontin, and they were finally suing the manufacturer, they didn't have enough people in the town to require that much medication. Number two, and boy, you hit that on the net, Florida's 49th in mental health funding. What is addiction? And I would say, in nine times out of 10, it is self-medicating, whether it's alcoholism or what. There was an incredible study I heard, NPR, I love it again, there were rats, and they were in a cage, and they had their water, they had their food, they were very stressed, and they had their bottle of drugs, and oh, how they loved the drugs. And then all of a sudden, they said, well, what if we put them in a natural setting, in a field, and they let them go? Guess what? The rats didn't need the drugs anymore. So, I mean, what you're using, the Vitrol, the Suboxone, all of this is wonderful, but you need to get at the person's cause. And if you look at West Virginia, which I, from what I'm understanding, is, is, you know, number one, people have lost hope in this society. Look at the economics. And you can try all your treatment centers, but until you get at the cause, what is making them do it? So it's the accidental, let's get on the, you know, our drug companies and our doctors and monitor these people. Let's look at the mental health, and our country is pathetic on that. And third is, the person, I'm gonna follow the leader, my best friend did it, or whatever else, you know, that gets into addiction. And all your experts, if I'm wrong, if you can't put them in those three, I'd love to hear about it. Once it's in your body, yes, you need it. Do we have ways to treat it with the Vitrol and Suboxone? Yes, but if you don't get at the mental health part, it's not gonna happen. And unfortunately, look what's happening in our government, they, they want to cut the NIH. Look at our health insurance, I mean, I'm sorry, this should be not-for-profit. I don't agree with these for-profit sober homes. Healthcare should not be for-profit. And in, you know, the jail, well, we have 80 people, we have no beds for them. Until we kind of re-change that, look at the mental health, holy, uh...
Thank you.
Bakers, you're not gonna change it.
David London to the microphone, please. Go ahead, sir.
Wow. This is my first meeting at one of these places, very interesting.
Name for the record.
I'm just a plumber, but I'm also a recovered heroin addict, and I was out there for 30 years, and there's a lot of, a lot of solutions going on here, there's some misinformation, so many things running through my head. To answer the mayor's question, Scripps Medical Center, I did the plumbing there, there was a lady on last night who was this close to some cure that's gonna stop the brain from remembering, it got high on meth, and they're gonna try and, anyway, unfortunately, there's not a silver bullet for addiction. In my case, my addiction goes back to kindergarten, is where it started. When I went into kindergarten, I was not as good as you, I was less than, I was a round peg trying to fit in a square hole. These feelings followed me throughout my life, until I finally found my coping tool. I couldn't live and enjoy life like others, I had to have something different, and when I was exposed to a narcotic, I had arrived. I chased this, it's the only way I could function in society, I would watch you driving to work, and wanted to be like you so bad, but I just couldn't. There was a void inside of me. I've been to countless detox centers, countless rehabs, countless treatment centers, you know, and I was in AA and NA in treatment for 25 years, and it wasn't until five years ago, someone finally explained, explained to me what recovery was. There is a set of directions to go through a transformation, to recover, much like you get when you buy a bike in a box. You follow the directions, I did, I went through a transformation, I don't think about it, I don't want it, I have a complete understanding of what comes with just one. We need to somehow get these people exposed to what recovery is. Sober's not recovery, clean is not recovery. Those are our beginnings, then there's some directions to follow. The Marchman Act, I just paid the bill on a girl that we had cremated, to have her remains sent to her mother. She overdosed nine times. I begged the doctors at three hospitals to lock her down, I tried the Marchman Act, couldn't do it. Baker's Act, 72 hours, they release them when their cravings are peaking. It's like me starving you for three days and letting you go in Publix Deli, you're gonna eat, okay? We need to have some way to lock these people down. She's dead. She was a beautiful spirited person. She had a 10-year-old daughter. I tried to help her for three and a half years, I couldn't get her help. The doctors, nine overdoses, hello, bodies full of abscesses and infections, corpse sitting there empty. 17 million, split over how many counties? What do we get, 60 million last year to study mosquitoes? Another 54 to the Health, Health Department this year, and we get 17? Those 3,000 lives must not be worth my, anyway, thanks for letting me...
Thank you for being here today. Thank you for being here today with us.
Philip Kozie. Philip Kozie to the microphone.
Okay, David London again. Taking off from what the previous gentleman said, when AA was formed, started, one of the co-founders urged them to, uh, to get in touch with or adopt the program, Dr. Abram Hoffre, who recently died. But Abram Hoffre was a psychiatrist, an orthomolecular psychiatry. That's a particular branch that's little practice because it's into nutritional biochemistry, not the drugs. And that's the problem. AA refused to pursue that direction. So therefore, limited direction. Now, previous speaker to him, lady mentioned about one of the three causes where people, someone falls off a roof and they're excruciating pain. In Delray Beach is a remarkable physiatrist, not a psychiatrist, physiatrist with 50 years' practice. And he has developed, using a somewhat conventional steroid in a particular way, he can go into the source of pain where he can identify the scar tissue and almost, almost immediately, basically, even with scoliosis, remove that problem. It's inexpensive. He's offered to share that and teach that. Very little interest. And what he has to go through with insurance companies, wants to get off insurance company. You know, you have a local, such a local resource. Have an item here related to, it's the smoking issue. Back in 1984, this particular health article described a particular technique developed by an institute of breathing in England, which was apparently 80% successful in having people be able to stop smoking. The Health Department has no interest in that. They don't even want to let me go into their, I even refused to go into there when they had the tobacco, when they have the tobacco-free partnership. Because they, in various ways, are still into the pharmaceuticals. I wouldn't look to Max Planck or all of these things for cures. There was a book written called The Brain Chemistry Diet or The Brain Chemistry Plan by another orthomolecular psychiatry. It was a conference in 1989 in Miami, in North Miami. What a remarkable book. He was able to psychologically profile people and then do some very special nutritional tests. And he was able, there wasn't a person with a problem that he couldn't help in his 30 years of practice. One last thing, this is called a private test. The private test does not exist. It was a company Donald Trump bought, but he ditched when he announced. I knew the physician using it. It measured three metabolic parameters through the urine. It had a, it was developed by an independent lab and Metametrics, that writes textbooks on it. And it was a remarkable system with a remarkable database that, that or something equivalent that should be utilized. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Conde to the microphone. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and County Commissioners. Thank you for giving the opportunity to share with you today. We've received a lot of useful data on the screen today. To me, I've always believed a picture's worth a thousand words. Some of y'all may have been privy to an article written by the Palm Beach Post and it showed a picture of 250 people that have died of drug overdoses. And the title of the article is Killer of a Generation. And my concern here is a long time recovering alcoholic and addict. I have four children with this disease. I have two daughters alcoholics. I have two sons that are heroin addicts. I've seen an awful lot. But I'm very grateful today that they're alive because there's some people in here that have lost children. But I remember a few years back, I was looking at my oldest son in a Rochester, New York hospital. He was in a coma on a ventilator. The heart monitor was flat. He'd been declared clinically dead and all I heard was the ventilator. And I'm sitting there wondering whether I'm ever gonna see his big, beautiful blue eyes again. I hope to God no parent ever has to go through something like that, but I did. And my point being, he survived the overdose. From what I've learned through my years in working with families, he served some time in prison for breaking probation. He went out on his own, got his doctorate and just recently finished a tenure at NYU. This did not come in the mail, folks. This is the point I'm trying to make. The families have been ignored. We've been forgotten. We have been dismissed. And the reason why is there's no money in it. The money's only in the alcoholic, in the addict. And that's where it drives this whole business. You know, when the pharmaceutical companies give the FDA $600 million, we've got a real war out there. My problem is, to me, the families. Because they have been ignored. You know, the AMA, I believe in 1959 declared alcoholism and drug addiction a disease. It's also a family disease. And the reason I say this is because when I looked around and, as a single parent, and I said, "Gosh, I've got one in prison, I've got one in treatment, I've got one in jail and I don't know where the other one is." And I said, you know, "I don't know what to do." And I reached out to a couple of 12-step programs and the one thing I found out, it's not enough. This is not about intellectual understanding. If it's about intellectual understanding, then I wouldn't have had four DUIs. I'm extremely well-educated and I'm a fairly intelligent guy. But I had to have three more before I could finally emotionally accept that I was an alcoholic and addict. And I love my daughters, but they're alcoholics. I'll always be their dad, but they're alcoholics. My sons are heroin addicts. And if I don't treat them that way, then I'm right back in the dance. I'm right back in this gerbil cage that we've all been in for a long, long time. And it's time we looked at the families. I have a company now called Family Recovery Solutions of Florida. We offer two- to three-day intensive workshops. Those who have individuals that have an active addiction, they can do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maureen Kielian, K-I-E-L-I-A-N. Go ahead, please.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Conde. I'm a taxi driver and I've been taking dope-sick people home from Gun Club County Jail since about 2007. I had a guy come out the other day and he was dope-sick. He didn't need a cab, but what he did say was, is that he wished he could get a shot of Vivitrol before he left the jail, which was the first time I'd ever heard of Vivitrol. I started looking into it and it turned out it is, it really helps the brain heal on the long term because it is not an opiate. Where on the other hand, Suboxone is synthetic heroin. People get addicted to it. People sell it as a street drug and abuse it. And from the addicts I've spoke to coming out of jail, the detox off of Suboxone is actually worse than the heroin detox. So Vivitrol's a big deal. I really hope we hear more about this and getting it used. Judge Krista Mark stated the engine running the criminal justice system right now is heroin. So if those 80,000 people, if only like 2,400 of them showed up to have heroin charges, probably about 83% of them were in there due to heroin. Gun Club County Jail is a literal catch basin for opiate and heroin addicts who have been arrested. The opiate crisis needs a ground zero to respond to the epidemic and the Palm Beach County Correctional Facility is the perfect place to build a foundation to do just that. As for Johnny Easton in the Palm Beach Post article, there are no beds available to offer treatment to addicts that have been Marchman acted by frantic loved ones. Plus, the girl standing on military at 3:00 AM that has a moment of clarity and decides she just can't get in one more stranger's car, but is homeless and addicted to opiates and has no one to call and nowhere to go, she has no immediate access to detox treatment. Plus, the mass jail intakes, they can be triaged right when they walk into jail and offered medical detox and rehab services right through the jail. And also too, the people that need the Narcan shot, that would be a place to bring them to. We can use the beds available at Gun Club with, of course, necessary funding to create a detox rehab facility on dedicated floors. I just kind of named this intervention initiative Club Tasha at Gun Club. I take dope-sick releases home from Gun Club since 2007. After dope-sick people get in my car, they usually call their mom and ask for money. I usually call the mom right back and say, "Don't send the money. Your kid already just called the dope dealer from my phone." Creating a senior position to oversee the opiate crisis, that ship I think has kind of sailed. We needed that when armed guards were posted at MRI clinics hooked up with pill mills and drug enforcers were hanging out at pharmacies, buying pills from people, filling oxy and roxy prescriptions. These people were given a choice. Take a felony for each pill, either that or turn your friend over or your best friend over or you're gonna be detoxing on the floor at Gun Club and become a criminal informant for us and keep on doing your opiates. I just really believe that Gun Club is the epicenter. They have the beds and I believe we could really set up a 60-day detox treatment center there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barry Chrischer. Go ahead, ma'am.
Maureen Kielian. I am a, from Broward County, a past member of the Broward County Substance Abuse Advisory Board. I represent a strong advocacy group, many of whom are in the audience, from Broward, Palm Beach and Dade County, that consist of moms and family members and treatment providers. I am a member of multiple task forces, on and on, but most importantly, I'm a mom of a son who's addicted, currently in long-term recovery. He became addicted to legally prescribed opioids in Broward County. The ongoing legal over-prescribing in Broward, Palm Beach and in the state of Florida. I thank you for this attempt. I applaud you. And we must take every effort to curb this epidemic. I applaud the back end here, the response from your first responders here. But we have to get in front of it. We have to stop creating addiction every day for every patient that is discharged from our hospitals and every patient that leaves a dentist office. One of the first steps again is prevention, the root of this epidemic. Be mindful that the heroin and the fentanyl, carfentanil is a symptom. You will never stop this until you get in front of it. We must use the tools we have available, including the prescription drug monitoring database, which Florida physicians are adamantly opposed to using. The Florida Medical Association refuses and has removed this from every legislative session. And we also need to utilize the recent release CDC opioid prescribing guidelines to attempt to curb this by preventing the new cases. We have to be mindful that addiction can happen taken as prescribed. Abuse is not required. Pharma would like you to think that. They've been brilliantly creative with abuse deterrent formulations. Well, it doesn't mitigate the risk of addiction. We have the U.S. Surgeon General's report to look at. We must encourage all authorized prescribers, that's the MDs, DOs and recently ARNs and PAs and our dentists, to use the PDMP for every prescribed controlled substance. All patients. CDC said one out of four is heroin. What about the 75%? What are we doing about that? That's the legal drugs. To conclude, we need to get all agencies together. I applaud you. Broward County is beginning a centralized receiving system. We can also utilize, hospitals report percent occupancy rates every day. Why do we look at percent vacancy rates? Why aren't hospitals detoxing? Because we just never did that before. We gotta break that pattern. There's beds available. I applaud the sober home task force. There's a House Bill 557 with the PDMP that needs to be stronger. And to conclude, the root problem here is the physician community has got to join this fight. The sober home... Thank you.
Thank you.
Alton Taylor to the microphone. Barry, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Barry Chrischer. I'm CJC board member and treasurer. We have all that money at the CJC. On behalf of the Criminal Justice Commission, I just wanted to reiterate, we're available to conduct any study and make any recommendations back to you to help you move this project forward. There's a lot of work that's been done up to this point and there's a lot of follow-up work. Obviously, that's required and we're here for you to assist you in any way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now Goslin to the microphone, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Alton Taylor. I'm the executive director of your largest publicly-supported, full-service substance abuse agency. Drug Abuse Foundation served more than 10,000 individuals last year. We're celebrating our 50th year of continuous services to Palm Beach County. My comments today are directly from the front line. I've been doing this work for more than 38 years. I've seen a lot of drug epidemics during those years, but I've never seen anything like this. Its lethality is virtually unprecedented. And the nature of this addiction is stubborn. Individuals caught up in it will require treatment that includes multiple relapses before they can achieve a level of sustained remission. Please be wary of promises of silver bullets. There are none. This problem will require not just thinking outside of the box, it's going to challenge us to get rid of the box altogether. I thank you for placing this problem at the top of the set of difficult priorities that your job confronts you with today. My board has asked me to let you know, we're in this fight with you. Let me conclude by highlighting a few of the factors influencing this problem. America has, or as Americans, we have an unhealthy relationship with drugs. We're 5% of the world's population, yet we consume 80% of the world's painkillers, 110 tons annually. The root cause of addiction is not a moral failing. It's a disease that cries out for treatment. Palm Beach County has one of the largest private treatment markets in the country. That market brings thousands of people to Palm Beach County from all over the nation. And many of those people end up in the public system. During the past 10 years, Palm Beach County has lost 60%, let me say that again, 60% of the publicly-supported treatment capacity that it had 10 years ago. Let me give you an example. 10 years ago, Palm Beach County was a model for the nation. It was the first county to have a secure treatment program in a county jail. People came from all over the country to view what Palm Beach County had done. Many counties in Florida modeled it. The SACE program was unique in Florida. It was a comprehensive program that provided services, and Chief Gogger can speak to this, that provided services for individuals with drug problems who were involved in the criminal justice system. 10 years ago, we had over 200 beds for men with substance abuse problems. Today, we have 60. 60 publicly-supported beds. So when I say, uh, we are worse off than we were 10 years ago, we are worse off in many respects. So we need to rebuild this capacity and we need to do so urgently. Commissioners, the decisions we make as a community exposes the values we share as a people. I wish time permitted me to share more with you. Because you've heard a lot today, but you haven't heard much from the folks who are out there trying to treat the problem. Every day, Drug Abuse Foundation gets calls from frantic parents. In fact, before I came here today, I was on a conference call with one of those parents. Their loved ones decided they want treatment and that loved one gets to our agency and told, "Get in line." In 2016, we put more than 1,600 people on a waiting list before they were able to get services. My emergency receiving center received over 5,000 visits for emergency detox service. And let me just conclude by saying, the low-hanging fruit, it's not that you need to create changes in the Marchman Act and all of those provisions. Let me tell you that the people who want treatment, that's the low-hanging fruit. They don't have to be forced into treatment. They want it. They can't access it. Let's start there. Let's get those people who want help, the help that they need, before we put a lot of energy in trying to force people. energy in trying to force people to do it, to get it. Come to my agency at any point in time, and if you wanna see what the front line looks like. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, ma'am. Micah Robbins.
Oh, one minute.
Yes.
Alton, we have a question.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKinley.
Yes, thank you. Just, could you tell me what caused the reduction in beds over the years?
Yes, and certainly Chief Gogger can speak to that, but Drug Abuse Foundation, in partnership with the Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office, ran the SAFE program in collaboration with five other providers for 20 years. And as we approached the financial crisis, the sheriff and the commission made a decision that it could not afford to continue that program. In addition to that, as you know, the cart facility was closed, and so that also contributed to the, to the problem. So primarily, it was a financial issue.
Okay, were any of those cuts from the state, or were all of those reductions in beds?
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, during the financial crisis, everybody cut, not just you. I don't wanna suggest that you are the only group that, that cut. Everyone did. The problem is, everyone promised that as the financial picture improved, we would restore those resources. That just has not happened.
If you had the ability, if there was funding from the state to expand detox indigent, detox beds at your facility, would you be able to?
What we would recommend is that the county direct its staff to assist in locating a facility, whether that's the jail or some other facility, that would allow us to create not only a detox center, but an addiction-receiving facility. That license already would allow that kind of facility to actually hold someone against their will. Again, you don't have to change the laws. The laws are already there. We have to fund them. So an addiction-receiving facility located in central Palm Beach County, our Drug Abuse Foundation's main campus is in Delray. You don't need to put any more detox beds down in Delray. You need them in central Palm Beach County. So that's what I would recommend, that we urgently do that because as the sober houses are closed, what happens is, every time a sober house is closed, we get a huge influx of people at our emergency receiving center that we have to, to deal with. And they're sleeping in our lobbies, they're all over the place because of the lack of resources. We are the safety net. We are the place where they, they end up with us or in the county jail. So we would strongly recommend that we set up a 28-bed addiction-receiving facility in central Palm Beach County.
I just want you to know, because I have been listening to a lot of public comment on the, on the Drug Farm and the Eagle Academy and, you know, future uses for those two facilities, as well as the Stockade facility over by the Fairgrounds. The issue that we're running into now, and if Madam Mayor doesn't mind, I'll ask a question through you, to Ms. Baker, but the issue that we're running into now is with the repairs that we have to do at the jail. We may have to relocate some of the inmates at the jail to the Eagle Academy. I don't think the Drug Farm right now because I'm, I understand that it's not air-conditioned, and there's, you know, that, I don't think that facility will be air-conditioned anytime soon, so that probably isn't an option. Our best option right now is to do something in the near future at the Stockade. And if, Ms. Baker, if you could address that quickly, I think that'll put some questions to the bed in the audience.
After, you know, after our discussion and staff further reviewing it, you're absolutely correct, the Eagle Academy and the Drug Farm is, is not useful at this time. And a large portion of the Stockade would not be usable due to the fact that we've got beds coming out of use as we renovate the jail. However, there, there is a section that staff has looked at, and that is the intake and infirmary building, which could be potentially utilized with some modifications to it. And so that's an area that staff is currently reviewing.
We do have interest in the legislature from, from some folks that have reached out to me, and if we could direct staff to put together a proposal, and perhaps we could see state fund, state funding for that, and then maybe that's something that we can shop for assistance from our state and our federal partners, if that's okay with the rest of the board.
Is this for the remodeling, the construction piece, or the operating piece?
You know, I don't think that the county should be in the business of operating a rehab or any type of medical facility, and I would suggest that we put that out for a private provider, a nonprofit, or somebody better suited to handle that, and that we provide the space for that to occur. That would be my proposal.
So we wouldn't provide any operating dollars to this private entity?
I would like staff to put together a proposal for us, and I think that the operating dollars could come from insurance reimbursements and Medicaid reimbursements, and if there are operating dollars that the county would need to put forward, I would just like staff to explore that entire option.
Well, to, we'll have, I'll have that conversation at the end after we finish all of public comment. Thank you very much for being here today. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Ganel Goslin. I volunteer with the Recovery Awareness Partnership with Southeast Recovery Advocates, and I am a mom of a child who has suffered with addictive illness. I am also the daughter of a woman who lost her life to alcohol addiction when I was only 15, and I have siblings, nieces, nephews, too many people to count who've been touched by the disorder. I would like to reiterate something that was shared before, that we must get ahead of the problem. I know that heroin and fentanyl, carfentanil, are very frightening immediate problems, but according to the 2015 Medical Examiner's Report, we lost 182 people to prescription drug overdoses, and that was an increase of a little over 17% from the year before, 2014. Now, I bring that up because at age 13, when I discovered my son had a marijuana problem, I was floored when his assessor said that he needed inpatient treatment because he was an overdose waiting to happen. He had been legitimately prescribed painkillers for a broken arm. And what I did not know about how dangerous opiate pain meds are could have killed my son because he was combining them with, you know, beers from the neighbor's garage. Parents need education about the dangers of those meds, information to lock them up, information about the pill drop boxes for where to take them, and we need our physicians to abide by CDC guidelines for acute pain. If my son had not had 30-day prescriptions, it may have never happened. It may have been prevented. I would also like to mention, as was asked before, what can we do for prevention for our young people? There is a tool, ESPT, screening, brief intervention, and referral to treatment that is evidence-based to get ahead of the problem and stop the progression of the disease. Part of the problem with our public perception is, we hear addict and alcoholic, and we're thinking of my mother when she's jaundiced and shaking from DTs, and we're not thinking of what it looks like at the beginning. We also must change the culture so that we can really get our school administrators and our parents to understand the three most dangerous words a parent can say are "not my kid," and the three most dangerous words a principal can say are "not my school." We need life skills-based prevention work. We need ESPT, and we desperately need a recovery high school. I had to send my son out of state to get the help that he needed, and thank God, he got two years of sober time that allowed his brain to mature. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Micah Robbins from the Palm Beach County Substance Awareness Coalition. First and foremost, I want to, that I'm speaking in support of this initiative that you have on, on the table today, not only because it's critical in this devastating time of opiate addiction and opiate epidemic that we're facing. I speak for prevention. It's wonderful to see prevention in the conversation today. You're hearing it from a number of people because we're not dealing with just an issue of substance. We're dealing with an existential crisis in our communities right now. This is gonna need a community approach. It's gonna need a number of factors. And if you look at this panel you see in front of you today, and if you look at the audience you see out there, this is the community response. Not only is it a now issue, it's been a, been an issue, and it's going to be an issue. I've been in this for 24 years, and I've never seen it this bad. Not only that, it's not going to get better soon. We have a lot of work to do. But I implore you to support these efforts. Look at where the dollars are gonna be used. Most importantly, get ahead of the issue. We have to stop reacting. Most of our substance issues that we see, we see it late in the game. We react. Prevention isn't a program. Prevention isn't a silver bullet either. Prevention's an attitude. Prevention's a culture shift. That we're educating ourselves, that we're motivating ourselves, we're empowering our families and our communities to look at the issues that cause these things in the first place. These substances that are out there right now, they're more powerful than anything we've ever seen. There's something being recreated in a lab right now that's gonna take its place. So, just so you understand, we're not starting from scratch. The folks that are sitting here today have been working at this tirelessly for a long time, and will continue to do so. There are groups already in place that are looking at how to put these things into practice. How do we educate our doctors, our parents, our kids? How do we do that effectively, intentionally, comprehensively? We have, in this room here, and you've heard of some suggestions just today, we have to get behind getting these young people and older people and all people that are suffering from not only substance use disorders, but from substance poisonings and everything else involved. We have to get them to a place of safety. We're about creating safe communities. If we don't have a safe community for any of these individuals to go into, we will lose this battle. So this is a community-based issue, a community-wide issue. You have an entire community sitting here, right in front of you, that is ready to go now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Commissioner Berger?